So, we apologize for the break in action. We had another issue with PAC TV, or not issue with PAC TV, they had an issue with the technology. They've been great, they solved it quickly, so we apologize for those wondering where we are. We will go back to Mr. Hall, you don't have to start at the beginning.
Okay. So, we were talking about our department goals and expected outcomes, and we've kind of put those into four buckets. The first is faculty and staff goals, and it's providing cutting-edge professional development and the most up-to-date devices to handle our ever-changing workloads in the classroom. Student goals, providing the latest methods and materials, guaranteeing device equity, and teaching good digital citizenship. Hardware, ensuring equipment is up-to-date and that we are using all available funding sources to offset courses' costs, I'm sorry, and stay current. And then infrastructure, providing for secure and consistent connections for all users. On slide four, our successes from the past year. First and foremost, the addition of our technology integration and digital learning specialist Mike Tinker. We would be lost without him, the work that he has done, and the way that he has ingrained himself into the faculties and the buildings in such a short time is remarkable. You know, initially, I thought like we'd love to hire someone who had a Pembroke background and kind of knows the town. He turned into Pembroke very quickly. He was an unbelievable hire for us, we're thrilled with him. The implementation of Perdeck as a pre-K to 12 student engagement platform. Perdeck is a really cool platform where students can interact with the slideshow as the teacher presents it. So, no longer is there a slideshow up on the board and a bunch of people watch it. Now, the student has their device open in front of them, has the slides open in front of them. The teacher is controlling what's happening on the slide, and then there are stops in the learning where the kids have to perform a task, or they have to interact with the slide, or they have to turn and talk. So, it's long gone are the days of the, you know, the death by PowerPoint. These are like legitimate, real interactions that the kids are having. And then it saves all of that data at the end as a great formative assessment for the teacher to be able to look at the data and see where the kids are at. So, that has been a huge win for us. Our student highlights, there's been a huge increase of making in the school district with the expansion of Makerspaces and 3D printing. We were fortunate enough to just be awarded a MasQ grant for a little over $2,000 to purchase four 3D printers for the high school library. For students to be able to use during Titan Time, for passion projects to really use that Titan Time, library time effectively. We had grants purchased, 3D printers for the middle school, as well as all three elementary schools. So, we've now got some, you know, really open-ended, basic manufacturing ideas for our kids, and there's some really cool things that are happening in those places. Hardware is the third one. Our new secondary devices for our staff were purchased with a 40% subsidy from the federal government. That was the Emergency Connectivity Fund. At the end of last year, we surveyed our staff and said, "What sort of things do you need to perform your job should we ever have to go remote later?" And that was the funding qualification for the Emergency Connectivity Fund. With the responses that we got from our faculty, we were able to push that forward as evidence that said that the devices that we had for our staff were not up to par. And we received, I think it was $58,000, which was the equivalent of 40% on the devices we ended up purchasing. The second thing is the installation of 106 ultra-short throw projectors and speakers at Bryanville, Hobymock, North Pembroke, and PCMS. Prior to this, every teacher in those classrooms in those four buildings had a metal cart with a projector, tiny little speakers, a lot of cables, computers teetering. We lost a lot of really good men out there. There were times where we lost some devices. But now, if you go around this building on your way out, you'll see them. There's two giant speakers mounted right above the board, and then a projector that shoots directly down onto the whiteboard. Walking around today, just kind of troubleshooting because they just finished the installs here last week. The teachers are just thrilled with their ability to get that stuff off the floor, the new, you know, the newness of it, the new features it has. You can connect to them wirelessly, you can wire to them, hardwire. And especially in like this wing of the building where the youngest kids are, we've seen the most fun happening, which is always, for me, is a big one. And that was secured, I believe, with ESER funding at the end of last year?
We used some CARES funding.
CARES money, okay. But again, money from the federal government, money from the federal government that was able to be used because it was creating some social distancing issues. And then infrastructure, we've continued to upgrade our wireless internet and use E-Rate funding and upgrades to our threat protection. E-Rate is the federal program for libraries and schools, and it offers a discount for purchase. There's category one and category two, category two is all the hardware stuff. We right now get about a 40% discount on those purchases, and we try to take advantage of the E-Rate funding as we possibly can. Our current staffing, there's me, Aaron Tinker is our software and data manager, our network manager, James Ulysses, media technician Ken Cruz, a digital learning specialist who's added this year, Michael Tinker. Five building-based stipended technology integrators, these are classroom teachers who receive a stipend. Sarah McNulty at Bryanville, Kate Nugent here at North, Allison Dumont at Hobymock, Adam Newell at the middle school, and Christine Murphy at the high school. And I would be hard-pressed not to recognize one of our guests tonight, Josh Barone, who is in the back there. Josh has been helping us out as an intern, Josh, thank you so much. Josh was huge in our work at the middle school on Friday in going through the classrooms, collecting equipment, sorting equipment. And he's been joining us off and on here for the last couple of months, which has been a huge, huge help. So, thank you to Josh. Looking at our current costs, staffing, software and licensing, and support. Internet, our portion through E-Rate with our savings noted there, and then supplies and materials. Where, you know, you look at the numbers and you see how big they are. It is all-inclusive of all of the software programs and platforms that are used by every single person working in the school district. From a classroom teacher to an administrator to a custodian to a student, every single person is using a computer, is using some sort of specialized software.
Can I ask you a quick question? You talked about, what, I counted, seven or eight 3D printers coming into the district?
Four coming in at the high school, those are the newest ones.
I think you said middle school, and you bought them at the middle school already?
Yeah, those are, yeah, up and running, yeah.
Does that going to impact the supplies and materials line? Because I know some of the materials on a 3D printer are kind of costly. Are we looking at an increase there, or did you already build it into the?
So, the original purchases through those grants, we made a significant, when we priced out the grant, we gave ourselves, we gave ourselves a lot of stock on the schools.
So, they didn't just give, I thought, okay, that's better. Thank you.
Yeah, as part of the grant, especially the MasQ grant, so there's four 3D printers, I also ordered 24 spools of filament.
Okay.
That will get us through a long time.
That's, if you got it through the grant, that's good.
And the spools really, the cost of the spools isn't that bad. They're $10 to $30, depending upon what you're choosing.
Yeah, depending on, I wasn't sure what you were trying to do with them.
Yeah.
So, because I know when you presented last, which wasn't that long ago, you talked about some of the things that kids are doing.
You really like something to school.
I do.
Yeah. Wonderful work. Some of the kids were doing some things, kind of, say, artificial limbs, but they were trying to.
Yep, the Enable project, yeah. So, the part of the goal with this was to build out that Enable project, the Stradale School. Right now, they're meeting basically in a closet, and the goal would be to get them during Titan Time in the library, see a couple of kids over there doing some things, kind of bringing some more people in to that, in a more public space.
I heard their buildings with 3D printers.
Yes, they are. Those are pretty rad, the ones that.
We don't have enough filament.
And they use cement, it's amazing. And then Matt Nugent, who interned for us last year, did a project for his marketing class where apparently you can use corn husks. There's a way to use, there's something about corn husks that they can be repurposed and used as a 3D printed material. Talk to Mr. Nugent about that one. As far as growing Titan Tech, what I see going forward is taking the K to six library special and turning it into a STEAM lab. So, if you look around this room right now, what you'll see is sort of what the goal would kind of be, right? You've got a lot of hands-on materials that kids are using, still have the ability to check out books and evaluate sources, but to be able to build with hands, to do design thinking, to look at art and engineering projects, and then, you know, build that out so that that same process is happening across all three buildings, right? So, that would create the pathway, starting with K to six, a STEAM lab, which would lead right into seven and eight with the Project Lead the Way stuff that is happening already at the middle school. And then eventually the PHS computer science and hopefully engineering pathway that would exist. And moving that as sort of a, everyone gets through and has the same experience, in the same way that music, where students are starting young with instruments, moving forward and becoming more proficient with them, and that's what the hope would be here. So, those three, for staffing, those would be three full-time teachers. It would be turning the paraprofessional positions into full-time teaching positions, and we would, you know, get some savings there because it would be, you know, taking what is now a paraprofessional salary and turning it into a teaching salary. It's not adding three full teaching salaries to the equation. The second piece is a junior network administrator. Currently, we have one network administrator who is essentially working in a silo. There is really no one that knows his position like he does. And to have someone in a silo like that is tough. What we would like to do is to really grow the bench and have the network that's been expanding at such a rapid pace and adding 1,400 devices in the last two years, to be able to handle the connectivity issues that we've had, to have someone else to bounce ideas off of, a junior network administrator, to grow the bench, to have another person in that silo. Because the silo right now that Mr. Ulysses is in is very tall and very full. So, you know, that's kind of where we're looking for there. Just sort of looking at our historical work tickets, you can see the growth of tickets over time. Last year, we had a lot of questions from home, which is in red. Those questions have died down as parents have gotten more comfortable with the Chromebook things. The, did I miss a slide?
No, no, I was just, I was just thinking.
Okay. Those questions have died down, but now we have the application of our staff. Our staff are using technology and applying technology in the classrooms to a point where they're bringing us in to do what we wanted them to do as instructional technology people, myself and Mike Tinker, to go into classrooms and have appointments with teachers and do some coaching and do some side-by-side teaching. I was able to observe a class that Mr. Tinker taught with Ms. Murphy at Hobymock, where he was teaching the class how to design their own Pong game. Like the original Pong, the kids were designing it on their Chromebooks with Scratch, using computer programming skills, and doing math thinking. They were talking about X and Y axis, they were talking about variables, they were talking about building out their sprites, so that, you know, it wasn't just the little bars, they had like a little goalie that they had designed that would go bounce back and forth, right? So, that sort of thing is happening now, and it's increasing our tickets. So, adding that junior network admin really, really makes a difference there for us. And then again, the device levels from 2019 to present, the 1920 and then 20 to present is in red there. You can see the difference there. Device needs, elementary staff laptops are aged out and are really showing their age, and we're spending a lot of time working on those. The hope is that there would be a second round of ECF funding, the Emergency Connectivity Fund. We already have the paperwork in place to submit for that, we're just kind of waiting for some assistance on that and hoping. The second is, there were about 30 rooms that were uncovered from the CARES project that we'd like to cover with projectors and speakers. And then replacing student Chromebooks, there's still some question on what our lease agreement looks like on the Chromebooks. But essentially, as we know it, the Chromebook lease ends on October of this year, and we'll have to hunt and peck and find 785 Chromebooks to return in good working order back to the company. So, we're hoping that we can figure out something there, and if not, that would be a cost for us to absorb.
So, the 200 would be to replace the 785, is what you're saying?
Correct.
Is it a lease arrangement or a purchase?
That's what we're trying to figure out with the town. Aaron Tinker is working on sort of the details on that.
Right, so, we have a host of Chromebooks that were purchased with CARES funding last year. These are older Chromebooks that were before that, and there was a town meeting vote for a lease purchase of Chromebooks and desktop devices for the arts lab at the high school and a couple of the computer labs. The town did not enter into a lease agreement, it was a purchase agreement, so we just have to figure out this sort of logistics.
That's fine, it's not critical for this discussion, why I think, a question I do have, is of that 785, is there an opportunity to purchase them at a discount? And is it worth it to purchase them? I don't know what the purchase price is, and if you don't have it now, don't worry about it, but it's something.
It's not worth it to purchase them, we've had them for three years, there's a ton of wear and tear on them.
That's, that's, that's fine, that's the answer.
If it came down to using them as they are or not having them, we could use them, but it would be, that three-year device cycle really sort of is the sweet spot.
Right, I think the price was $189 to buy them at the end of the lease per device, but you can get a new one for like $250, I think.
Yeah, that was my guess.
With the licensing, yeah.
Okay.
So, do you, you need like lead time if you decided to purchase them? Is there like a lead time, I know it's supply chain issues, is that something we have to worry about?
I will say that the salespeople that we've been working with have been excellent about delivery and being able to find stock. That said, it could change at any moment.
Here's the problem, we're not, unless there was a way to, well, there is a way. If we wait, and this goes as a town meeting vote, we wouldn't be able to do anything until July 1st unless it was in the special, or we use CARES money, right?
Right, so, there's a couple of pieces at play here in the larger budget. Remember, these budgets are presented in a silo. So, we have funds in our operating budget that are associated with lease payments. So, we had our ESCO lease payment, which is the fiber optic that goes through the town and a couple of building envelope projects. That comes off of our operating budget this year, that's the last year of that lease, that's paid off. It could roll into a lease from Chromebooks. There's also a larger conversation on what is the number of Chromebooks that we're looking to replace. So, remember, there's 785 here, there's 351 from the CARES money last year.
1,500.
Sure. So, that's one device for every student, which definitely makes sense, seven through 12. Does that necessarily make sense, two through six? We need to figure that piece out. So, whether we're replacing these 785 and fewer of the 1,800 when they come along down the road two years from now, we need to figure out what the right model was. The access to those funds for CARES to get the 1,800 devices was not a shift as the district being a one-to-one district. We did not provide the professional development for staff for that, we haven't, we didn't do the planning for that. And so, I think we need to sit down and figure out what's the right number. Is it 10 per elementary classroom and then one-to-one, seven through 12? Or what is the number, and that we're still working on. Okay.
And then on the second level, the priority two, a storage solution for elementary classrooms. If you were to walk into an elementary classroom, teachers have gotten very creative about storage for Chromebooks.
A lot of dish racks.
Dish racks seem to be the way to go, it's a very inexpensive way to sort Chromebooks. We have seen some small fires at Hobymock of computers charging. We'd like to avoid those sort of things. The, you know, the dish racks, while lovely ideas, aren't necessarily secure if, say, a door was wide open overnight, you know. So, setting up something where we have a storage rack that's lockable and chargeable and reliable and age-appropriate for elementary school students is one thing. And then the second is the desktop replacement for computer science and digital art classes as those are coming due. And then, as far as hardware and equipment needs go, I know there's talk at town meeting about security cameras and increasing the number of security cameras in the elementary schools and the middle school. So, I've left that at TBD, but it does line up with the district and town goals for safer schools. VMware server replacement, that's end-of-life, continued AP replacement in all buildings, so the access points, we have waves that we do to replace the access points, which is the little Wi-Fi hotspot in the ceiling. I believe in here, it's under the exit sign. But, you know, going through those, and we have a, you know, we have the ability to manage those and check their ages and then see where the ones are that we need to replace. And then finally, the universal power supply, and this is something that's come up recently. Whenever the power goes out, we go to this battery backup. In researching this a little bit, we found out that the battery backup is older than most of the seniors at the high school. Battery backup dates somewhere to between 2003 and 2005. So, we need to replace those. And those were end-of-life as of October. End-of-life, end of support, yeah. So, now they're going on the antique market on eBay, so, you know, there's an opportunity there, I suppose. Some software needs, things I talked about at the last meeting, like GoGuardian, which is, you know, teachers, it's a classroom management tool for teachers. You know, monitoring students and being able to share stuff with students virtually while they're on their Chromebooks. CSO Premium, which is our computer, sort of, class information system for pre-K to two. And then Google is our K, I mean, I'm sorry, it's our two to 12 group. And then Perdeck, which we talked about as an engagement platform, further security of the network and network management software. The summary of requests, the big one there, of course, is the addition of staff and the device replacement cycle. Next steps would be developing that STEAM specialist program at the elementary level and curriculum for that, a junior network administrator. And then further expansion of Project Lead the Way, the career pathways, and the build-out of Makerspaces at all levels. And of course, pie in the sky, I would love to have a full-time educator in every building that could go and coach teachers as digital learning specialists. We can just clone Mike Tinker and it'll be fine.
Brandon, what do you see the licensure area for the STEAM specialist to be?
So, there's a couple of different options on that. There's the, you know, elementary certification. There is an instructional technology certification that tends to be the, sort of, the target one. And that one is, I believe that one's K to 12, the instructional technology one. And that one is sort of more attainable with experience. Someone that is teaching, if they were teaching in a STEAM position, they could then put together a portfolio, yeah.
In case there are any interested candidates watching.
Correct, right.
Question?
So, that VMware server, you said it's no longer supported after 2023, so we could potentially look into that next year if we needed to?
I would have to defer to Mr. Ulysses and Mrs. Tinker on that one. And that would be E-Rate funding too, so we would get a 40% discount on that purchase.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, is it 75 to 40%, or is it?
That would not be the 40%.
No, we'd be responsible for a 40, 42.
And is it safe to assume that the Chromebook is really the most affordable replacement device as we look at replacing the really old ones? Are we going Chromebook for Chromebook?
100%.
I'm shopping around for a device myself, so, you know, it seems to be the way to go. But, is there any use in looking at maybe a more expensive device that lasts, has more of a shelf life than three years?
Ultimately, the Chromebook is sort of the gold standard for what pre-K to 12, I should say, two to 12 students are using. They're durable, they've been built to be durable.
They're plug-and-plan, right?
The ones that we have have pick-proof keys. They have, they've developed Chromebooks that are watertight. I went to a, I saw a sales rep take a Chromebook and take a bottle of water and dump an entire bottle of water on the keyboard, and it had drains, and the Chromebook, the water was just coming out of the bottom of it, and then she logged on and nothing, like nothing had happened. So, the Chromebooks, I mean, I'm not going to say that they're built to military specs because that's a whole nother level, but they've built them to withstand the use of, you know, my fourth grader, my first grader.
All right, great, that sounds, thank you.
This is a delicate flower, this MacBook is a delicate flower.
You don't see many of those here.
No, right. But the Chromebook, they fall off the table, they come back up, you open them up, everything's fine, yeah. Even the number of screens we're replacing this year have gone way down. Which is good, yeah.
Thank you. I'm good right now.
Are you playing?
Are you doing math over there?
No, no, I'm not doing math.
Be careful, everybody.
I do have one question. The six, if you go to your summary, can you list the reasons you're going to fall? The 255, you said that that, there's, that's not the net. What would, what's the cost of repairs? What's the cost of a power?
So, it would be 120, that line would be 120,000 instead of what he has in there. I think you have 65 times three, whatever.
Right.
It's 40, a power is about 25,000.
Do we have a power now?
All of the libraries have a power right now.
So, it's already, so that's included in the 57?
In the 255.
I mean, so, the, yeah, the library powers are.
And that cost is only one, the incremental cost is 120.
Okay, all right, got it.
And then the addition of the junior network administrator is the others. I assume 60,000, that seems to be about the cost in kind of polling my colleagues in other districts.
Okay, I'm sorry, what was that, the junior network?
About 60,000, that seems to be the going rate.
So, basically, that gets to 180 for this line. Okay, is there any value to keeping the three paraprofessionals, but only adding one person, I'm sorry, one person at this, one of your school-based? Is there any value to it, or is that just?
Turning one of the paraprofessionals into a teacher, or, I'm sorry.
Now, leaving the three, leaving the three powers.
Yep.
Your proposed model is to replace the three powers with three, I want to give this.
STEAM specialists.
Three STEAM specialists. If we couldn't do that, is there any value to keeping the three powers and only adding one STEAM specialist to balance between the three and work with the powers? If you have to think through it, think through it, it's just an awesome, I'm trying to think because that ends up.
Right, so, the money doesn't work great there, right? So, you're talking about 75,000 for pairs and another 65 for the teacher, so it ends up being more.
Instead of 120 incremental, if you add one, you end up adding 55, it's a $55,000 reduction from the number we have.
Right, and that's absolutely part of when we start to prioritize and figure out how can we get things moving, right? And so, we've very rarely been able to just take a program and start it, right? You can look at the social workers who incrementally grow. So, you know, when we bring information back to you and prioritize, I could see that being a way to start to grow that program. You know, it takes a unique person to move between three buildings. We don't have a lot of people that do that, and it creates some inefficiency in their schedule, but.
Don't disagree, I'm just trying to understand what other options are.
To that point, can you do like a part-time, like a, for each?
So, part-time is hard. You don't get a lot of traction on part-time positions because people are looking for benefits and full-time employment. And it's also, you know, it's, it's good to have the same expectation, right? So, we do have a part-time model with our reading specialist, and we don't have 3.5 reading specialists. We have one person that goes between two buildings and a .5 for consistency, consistency reasons. But we can look at all of these options, you know, if it's a matter of trying to figure out how to get something going, we can give you all of the options and let you guys pick. guys pick.
Well, I think the dialogue around the work tonight is really just what Mike was sitting on, because I think the bigger picture, and that's why I sort of held off for now, is how you piece some of this together, because we're dealing with some of the bigger items, and this is sort of foundational to where we're going as a district and where education is going. So how does that tie into the bigger picture? So I'll have more questions then, on how we're covering that, because...
The thing here is the way the CARES fund, funding is written, it has more applicability here, as well as a few other areas. So while you, if you just look at CARES as generally funding source, right, assume everything else balances, you can use CARES for a chunk of this, you know, the bottom two items, but you can't use CARES for probably, yeah, most of what, the positions in most of what Gwen presented.
Right, and you remember when we talked about the SRR buckets, we talked about that SRR three, that 860,000 is primarily rooftop units and device replacement, right? It's capital, it's stuff, it's not interrupted learning or achievement gap work.
Which is good in that.
Because when you talk about some of the things, access point to me is it, is, is one of the things that we would want to use some of that CARES funding for because it's true infrastructure, right? And because of the way the models have changed as a result of COVID, or they were headed that way, but they just happened quicker because of COVID, access point controls is part of the, right, the infrastructure that they were trying to, to build out. So it just, unfortunately, it ends up as a 3D puzzle.
Yeah.
Right, because you're looking at funding on one access, you know, traditional funding on one access, some of the grant funding through CARES and SRR and whatever else comes next, and then you're looking at priorities. So it's, it's not an easy...
Can we combine CARES and E-Rate funding at the same time? Can you pay for your portion?
So CARES is gone, CARES doesn't exist anymore. Everything we have is SRR, which is grants, you've got to write the grant to DSE, it's going to be in certain buckets. You can always combine with E-Rate funding. For anybody not familiar with E-Rate funding, E-Rate funding is a function of your free and reduced population as well. So we've seen some ebbs and flows in our number there as well, so, you know, just in effort of full disclosure, there could be some dips to that 40% if our population shifts.
And we can pay for networking equipment and for internet access discounts through E-Rate.
Yeah.
So we're going out to bid on that actually next week.
Anything else? There's a lot to consider.
That's just two of your, like, 11 budget presentations.
No, 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 just stop right here, you're done, all good.
Yeah, unfortunately, we are having, in some cases, we are trying to stop while, so on budget overall, this is more than welcome standard, but overall, the budget, yeah, a couple things. So the governor's budget came out last week after we met, it came out, I think, late Wednesday. They went up from the $25 per student to a whopping $30 per student. So...
Didn't go down.
Yeah, it didn't go down. It didn't go down. But at 4.6% inflation, which actually has risen above 6...
It went down then.
20, yeah, it did go down. So, so that's the one thing, and right, ultimately, it's going to end up around that, give or take, some numbers, although we do have a reduction in enrollment, which will...
Thank you, Brandon.
Thank you, Brandon, which will ultimately impact that.
Thank you very much.
So that's kind of the first thing. The second thing is, I think we talked about this last week, that we expected a town budget last Wednesday. We still don't have that as of today, so we don't know what the town has. So what I'm going to ask right now is, we hold off on budget discussions and push out the meeting on the 15th to the, and just go the first, and we have to re, kind of, we have to kind of reformulate our plan to get to a public budget hearing on May 3rd. Unfortunately, we have to backload it. I don't think we're at the point where we have to a Saturday budget meeting, which we did in the past years ago. But the town is, because we don't know what we're dealing with, we can keep having these discussions, it just makes it so much harder because we don't know the other side of it, right? We don't know, the million we saw last week on maintenance of effort, you add a lot from tonight, you know, the two numbers for tonight.
It was like 52.
When it was 52, yeah. You know, and you're basically adding about, give or take 800,000 from tonight. So of that, that's all adds. But the point is, is where are we? No one can say where we are tomorrow, because we don't have the town number, we don't have, last year, the town number was $600,000 plus chapter 70. We don't know if it's 600, we don't know if it's a million, we don't know if it's 100,000, we just don't know. So for us to have better conversations with the people who are presenting, it makes sense to push out the 15th and then go, and then figure out March better, and then again in April better. Anybody have an issue with that?
So when do you want to, so just not do another meeting this month?
Yeah, and what we'll do is we'll have a budget subcommittee meeting the week of, what, so 7th, 4th, we'll have a week, week of the 14th, we'll have a budget subcommittee meeting?
Okay.
Because by that point, we'll have the, we should have the town number, if we don't cancel.
Yeah, so Bill's presenting Monday evening to the select board, his, what he's saying is a balanced budget, but I did ask him what he was using for, was it a flat percentage increase for each department, and he was still working through what that looked like, so.
Because the thing is, even if we go through, in the budget subcommittee, we can't even track to what we need to track to without that number, because that's what we're doing the math to. So, and we can't even make a good guess. We don't know what he has in there for new growth numbers, we don't know what he has in, basically, new growth from additions into the town, you know, changes, people adding addition, people building new homes, people building new businesses, we don't know that, we don't know if they, what the excise tax numbers look like, all these things that could potentially act as funding sources, so. All right? Okay.
So is that, I understand that, but hearing the individual departments, we're not necessarily really diving into it until the administrative recommendation budget, does that impact you, Erin, as far as holding off on that?
So you're going to end up pushing, right? So you'll, you'll probably get your admin recommended budget the second meeting in April instead of the first, unless you add another March meeting. But even if we're not talking about it, even if I'm not presenting about what the budget gap is while Gwen's presenting or Earl Brand is presenting, it's helpful for you all to know what we're already trying to solve before you get so far down the path that, this would be so great to add, but we're not going to do it, right? Like, there's, there's, there's a public piece to it too, and, you know, I can't say that in 12 years I've ever heard a bad idea from somebody in their budget presentation, but, you know, once, once it gets too far, you can't reel it back in. And, you know, historically, we have had to make reductions in order to balance, and there have been times where we've made additions, but those additions come at the expense of a different reduction. And I don't think this year is going to be any different than that. I'm hopeful that, you know, like last year, we'll have some relief because we have been really fiscally responsible with our SRR funding and not using it, and, you know, gives us the ability to pluck off some of these network issues or some other kind of capital things that aren't necessarily on the docket of the town, but it's just creating a multi-year problem, right? Because if we're going to add staff, then we're looking at how are we sustaining staff? Because you don't want to be the district that is hiring people and laying them off year after year, and we're unable to attract candidates.
Even if you think of, we've talked about the SRR money in the past, our objective was obviously to maximize what we got out of it, but then also help it solve multiple year budget problems, rather than just, oh, let's, we have this pile of money, let's all spend it this year, and now we're dealing with the problem next year, even if it's one-time expenses, right? That's not responsible, it's fiscally irresponsible. So what can we do to let that, have that help us?
Well, no, that's why it's good to hear from them, what are their long-term visions? Because ideally, as we put capital plans together, as we put cycles, like you said, how long, how many years do we need kilns, and then what's the next time we need kilns? So let's get that on the books, so we know in 20 years, we're thinking, next committee, whoever's there is going to be thinking kilns, right? So as we start to map this stuff out, we know when it's coming up.
Yeah, and what's interesting for me is, when you look at what we saw tonight, because of the way the SRR funds work, as crazy as it sounds, it's easier to solve a bigger chunk of Brandon's issue than it is Gwen's issue, which is just odd, but it's just the way that money is...
Right, and keep in mind, everything that Gwen presented and Brandon presented is an excellent idea. After you've heard all 11, what's the most excellent idea? Is it elementary class size? Is it, you know what I mean? So there's, there's a lot of pieces here, so, I mean, you know, as much, as much as I enjoy Jess's company, her presentation is always things that we need, not that we want, so.
Sorry.
Yeah, hers is always like...
And the same with technology, right? That's sort of foundational to the district versus a department, so that's sort of...
Right, we've been working hard at the replacement schedule pre-COVID, and I don't want to get out of that cycle, because it took us 10 years to get into at least purchase, for lack of a better word, so I want to keep, keep with that cycle.
Okay, all right, so that was all on that on budget. So let's go, let's do 4A and 7C together, which is the consideration of draft communication and the COVID masking update. So if, when, do you want to do the?
I want to do whatever you want.
Which one do you want to do first?
I want to do the mask update.
So why don't you do that, and then we'll talk about, talk about the, yeah, because do we have the list, go, we're going to ask.
That wasn't very friendly.
No, 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 it wasn't meant that way.
So, this is a short update, obviously, not a lot changes in seven days, we were just back here last Tuesday, but for your information purposes, there are 12 active student COVID cases in the district, four at Bryantville, one at Habermock, one at North, four at the middle school, and one at the high school. So that's 12 in a district of just over 2,500, which is less than half a percent. As far as staff, we have one active staff case, and that's at Bryantville. So our numbers this week do align with what you're seeing on the townwide COVID dashboard. I know there's now this huge disclaimer at the top that says there's some kind of backlog in Maven, because there was a few days of zeros. I did talk to Lisa, obviously, they were expecting a zero during the snowstorm, because not, people didn't get out to test, but she would have thought it would, if there was a huge influx of cases, that it would have hit by today, and she's not seeing that, I think she's our four for today. So obviously, we are trending in, in the same direction of the schools in the town, so that's, that's positive news. As far as vaccinations, we are creeping along here, friends. So the middle school as of today is at 77.55% vaccinated.
The middle school?
This is the high school, sorry, did I say middle school?
Sure.
Middle school, high school. So that rose just a little over half a percent from last week. When we talked last week, the middle school's moving faster, right? So obviously, our students at the high school have been eligible for vaccinations for a longer period of time than our students at the middle school. You saw last week I presented, there were 40 students last week with their first vaccine, there are 43 at the middle school right now with their first vaccine. None of last week's one dose have turned into two dose this week, but at the middle school, you can see our, we did collect staff data, 49 out of 58 have self-attested to being vaccinated, those have trickled in, so it's possible there's one or two more that will come in, but that's about right, that's about 83% of the staff, which is kind of where we thought the staff were across the district. But as soon as some of those 43 turn to second dose, we are going to be at 80% pretty quickly. I forget what the magic number is off the top of my head.
Yeah, I'm looking at that right now.
I usually write it down.
Did you do it?
41, 481 times 0.8. The magic number is 385, so 35 students is what we're looking for at the middle school. So over the matter, over the course of the next two weeks, we will be at 80% today. You know, obviously, the intention is as soon as we get to 80% to file the waiver for mask optional. I am optimistic that the high school will creep that way too. You know, at a half a percent, we're about three weeks out from what's happening at the high school.
So, okay, so let's stop here at this point. So we're getting close to that magic 80%, which puts us at the point where we can request a waiver.
We can file the waiver.
We can file the waiver. If we, depending upon the timing of the meetings and everything else, are we comfortable at this point to take a vote to authorize the superintendent to request a waiver for Pembroke High School and Pembroke Community Middle School when they reach the 80% mark?
Yeah.
Okay, so based on that, make it formal, is there a motion to authorize the superintendent to request the waiver of DESI when Pembroke Community Middle School or Pembroke and/or Pembroke High School reach the 80%?
So moved.
Second.
So motion by Sue, second by Lance. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, add as unanimous.
Just so you have an idea of what the waiver looks like, it's really just me attesting to the fact that we've collected the information, that it meets the threshold, there's no other information that we're sharing, so.
How long is the...
The turnaround time is about 48 hours. I did call on the state last week, because I, I really thought some of the 40 middle schoolers were going to be second doses this week, so I thought we were a little bit closer than, than this, and just wanted to make sure I had an idea of the timing, and she said 24 to 48 hours for the approval.
Okay.
Great, so we're like two weeks and 48 hours away from approval.
Possibly, yeah.
Let's just get there and then we'll go from there.
I just want to give you a little update at the, about the at-home testing program. So we did send out the notification to families and to staff to opt into the at-home testing program. The deadline for the first distribution of kits was 1/31. So yesterday, we had 131 staff members and 379 students, so each student is eligible for a kit, so if you're a family with five students, you can get five kits. I do anticipate that will grow. These kits are in my office labeled for distribution, so they'll start going to the schools tomorrow. The plan is to have them coming home with students on Thursday, and then we start again. So if you've opted in, you're in for the, all of the weeks that we offer tests. If you didn't meet the deadline of 1/31, you can still opt in, and we'll send a reminder to families tomorrow that if you didn't opt in first, you can still opt in and we'll get the next distribution. So kits go out every two weeks, so the next time you'd get a kit is right before February vacation.
Questions at all?
That's it.
Okay, so, okay, let's just give one more update, then we'll get, if there are any questions from the audience. So last time, we talked about the DECA trip and the DECA letter, the letter went to DECA asking for a virtual option, or some type of other option for students to participate who qualify, who may not be fully vaccinated, which is the requirement in Massachusetts. One of the things we also asked of the administration was to look at other events happening in communities where there's a vaccine mandate, so Boston, Worcester, not just to much of lower degree, then Cambridge, Somerville, those are communities that have a vaccine requirement, if I have it correct, no Boston or Worcester do.
Cambridge also.
Cambridge, yeah, I figured Cambridge did, I thought Somerville was headed that way. So we need to, we need to inventory what those are, so we can figure out are their options, or are they looking at changing venues if it's a small enough event, whatever it is? One thing that got brought to my attention by a parent, you'll, you'll see the email came in late to the school committee mailbox, Bryantville Band is going...
The elementary band.
Elementary band is going to, yeah, Bryantville Elementary is going...
All of the elementarys will go together.
Oh, all elementarys go together, great, because they've done Gillette too. But they're going to Fenway, and the question is, are they going to be subject to that? But then Erin brought up a point, want to bring that up now?
So with locations in the city of Austin, there is a, a piece of the legislation that says school trips, K through, for students K through 12 are exempt from the requirement, so...
Yeah, that was brought up about the museum of science, so...
Yeah, right. When I reached, I did reach out to DECA today because I was confused on why they wouldn't offer that to students. They're saying that that is not a exemption for the Heinz Convention Center, where the students are, that's not considered a traditional school trip venue, I guess. So obviously, just started having that conversation today, the students have a couple of weeks before we're going there. Fenway Park, in addition to being outdoors, also in their wording has the exemption for K through 12 school trips, so...
So can we do this, because...
You can do so many things.
I know you can, you can do them so well. Can we get, it'll help this committee, it'll also help people who are, who know of the trips that we may not know of. Can we get all the trips listed?
Right, so that's what I started to do, because you did ask us that last week, and it got to the place where there was, there's no rhyme or reason to them, right? There's no, there, some places have a testing requirement, some places have a vaccine requirement. What, what is your bar, right? Because when we were talking about Harvard and the Model UN, it was test, I think it was testing at, or BU, wherever they were going, it was testing at the time, and so...
Use the Harvard of the outside of the red.
And so we, we didn't send the Model UN a letter, because we said families are making the choice to test or not test. But then we decided to send DECA a letter, because they're requiring vaccination and testing isn't a choice, so...
But I don't think at the time, I'm thinking Model UN is now under the vaccine requirement the vaccine requirement because it's in the city of Boston, potentially unless they're calling it a school trip, but then they'd be exempt. So, and at the time we talked about Model UN, the city did not have a vaccine mandate, if I remember my timing, because I don't believe the mayor was the mayor.
Right.
So.
So I thought it would be easier if you had like some kind of, not generic, because that's, but some kind of letter that addresses all of the trips.
Can we just find out?
Yep.
I guess, can we, can we find out what's covered, it's covered, which are the ones impacted? How many are impacted? I, do we know, is it one, is it 10, or is it not one?
I stopped at 10 today, not gonna lie.
But what, what is that?
So that's at least 10 venues, 10 trip, potential.
So there's 10 potential conflicts, right? But we have students going to the Van Gogh exhibit later this week, which is technically in the city, so there's a vaccine requirement, but they're accessing the exemption for K through 12 trips, so.
Anything that is impacted that doesn't hit the.
Well, I just, I'm not sure that some of the advisors and some of the trips have gotten all the way through the process on whether or not the exemption is being used or not, right? Because you would assume if it's there, every school group would be offered that option. But we can see from, we see from DECA, we see from some of the Coral pieces that that's not the case, but it is the case for the Van Gogh exhibit, so.
So the, the music ones, that's not the case, like the All State at the.
No, Pam shared some back and forth that Gwen had shared and the All State is saying you need a vaccine requirement.
It's just unbelievable to me. Like, it's just so discriminatory.
It's, it's, well, it's minimum it's inconsistent.
Yeah.
So let's, let's, so.
Consistently inconsistent.
And I know you're, I know it's frustrating for you because you don't know what our ask is, to me, the ask, I'm going to make, I think the ask is simple. Anyone who's not, it's crazy, is not abiding by the exemption, we would want to ask why they would create, again, create the subgroup, or why, why are they not going?
Right, and I think what happened when I started to list the trips and the locations, I was like, oh, well, they have the exemption, so do they, are they using it or not?
That's a question, we, we, I think we have to ask them.
Okay.
We have to ask what the accommodation is for those who aren't vaccinated. Because, you know, I feel like it's not the only, the only reason, it could be medical related, it's not just that a parent doesn't want to vaccinate their child, there's like lots of reasons. I, I know a family who can.
And even if they've had COVID, they suggest you wait to vaccinate.
Yeah, exactly.
There's definitely different, different.
And there's people who have had COVID, it might, you know, like if it's only been like a couple of weeks or whatever, I don't know, like, there's just so many variables there and I just think like we have to, at the, at the very minimum, they should come up with a, an accommodation. We would want the same for, for anybody, any, any population, whether it be someone who's handicapped, somebody who's, you know, like.
Well, is that to Mike's point then, are we sort of formulating a template to be used in any of these various situations and giving our permission to use it when needed? And so sort of basically saying, here, we're, we're giving you our permission to use this when it's needed.
When it's needed.
DECA is clearly something that's needed. If you say, okay, the Museum of Fine Arts is allowing students to go based upon the stated exemption by the city of Austin, that to me is, it's an easy one. We don't, there's no action needed, right? It's weird, where do we need action? This is kind of the frustrating part, right? When, like, even with our letter that we wrote, is we can't, we can't figure out what the action is or the next step unless people tell us what their criteria is and why they're choosing that criteria. And there could, I'm going to go out on a limb and say there could be a good reason, we may not agree with it, but they could think it's a good reason. My point is, is we don't know, we can't tell you where to act until we know what the problem is. Is that?
We need them to proactively communicate the why behind the what, if they vary from the one-size-fits-all standard.
That's the thing, it's, it, yeah, they gave these exemptions for a reason. They built these exemptions in for a reason. Now, why that venue is choosing not to, it could be a situation where the venue doesn't know. But the venue may not know.
Like maybe we asked.
We didn't know about this, I didn't know about this till 7:15, or 7, 6:45 tonight, when Erin mentioned it. You know, to me, they may not know, and if they don't know, then let's educate them so we don't have to deal with this.
Right.
Is that fine?
So is that responsibility falling on the teachers to notify you when they need support? Or what's that process look like right now for you as a district?
Well, teachers always have to apply for field trips. There's always a, there's an application process for any field trip, whether it's next door to Kingston or if it's.
Right, I just, I think the.
Right, but is there now a line? Have you looked into what the regulations are?
So most of the, most of the times when they do a field trip, they do have that fine print. They just, I think this is something that they've just not been aware of, so it's something that once we educate people about it, I think it's an easy, easy thing to get at.
Yeah, it's an easy thing that we have to work on relatively quickly.
Yeah.
So, do you have a comment?
I just wanted to say, I agree, there is a lot of confusion, it seems like Boston, I mean, I have a couple of things here just from, like, this one is from Matt Carr, who is the director of operations at the indoor track and field at Reggie Lewis.
Yeah, because our kids are going to Reggie without.
Yeah, and he said that, you know, he's received definitive word on the city of Boston's vaccine mandate and how it applies to the weekend's Northeast Invitational at the Reggie Lewis. And number four says, "It does not," and not is all capitalized, "apply as per the Boston Public Commission to athletes, coaches, and officials who are subject to their school and league guidelines." And then this one is from Mayor Lu, Wu's like website or something, and it says, "Does this policy apply to schools or school programs?" And it's, the answer is no. "The policy excludes public and non-public schools pre-K through 12, school trips, school programs, childcare programs, and community settings. Students participating in school trips to covered establishments such as museums or school-sponsored athletic events are not required to show their vaccination status."
I, I knew schools pulled out of the Reggie for track because they thought they had the vaccine mandate and they were using Wheaton College, the only other venue they could, because they just didn't know. So it, it's clear that either people did, clearly people didn't know and they're not publicizing that this is an exemption. So that's why I think there's, I think there's three scenarios. I think there's the people who are putting their own rules, the people who are, I hate to say it, the people who don't know.
Right.
And then the people who are abiding by, yep, we're going to allow it because it fits, they, they know the, they know the exemption, they don't know the exemption, or they're going to make up their own rules.
Yeah, I just suggest you use stuff like this to go after each venue that we have, whether the 10 plus or whatever, that's all.
Yeah.
If you don't require vaccine, you don't need to be vaccinated.
Oh, this, this isn't masking, this is vaccine.
Yeah.
Yeah. Please don't do that.
Yeah.
So, I, I, listen, everybody's trying to be clear, but I think everybody was taken it by, oh, there's a vaccine mandate, it applies to, so, so can we, can we get that? Let me, let's do it this way. So is there a motion to authorize the superintendent to write a letter on our behalf asking for accommodations to venues who are not allowing a school exemption for a vaccine mandate? Is that clear enough? Is that clear enough for you?
For me, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, is, is there a motion?
So.
Motion by Lance, second by Sue.
And I'll give you the list of everybody I sent it to.
Yeah, in that way, she can act on our behalf, just, here's the thing, if there's an accommodation and they say that, again, I'll go back to a professional, you know, situation where it was, yes, there was a vaccine mandate, no, there wasn't a test opt-out, or in some cases there was a test opt-out, even in, even in the New York City mandate, there was a test opt-out. So let's figure out what they're doing to allow the kids to participate. It's just.
Yeah, and then I just wonder, you know, like the certain ones that like we really need the kids to participate in, like DECA and, you know, All States, for example, because they're resume building things, but then there's a whole bunch of trips that don't necessarily fall into the resume building thing, that if they were to require a vaccine and had no other way around it, I would want to reconsider whether we went at all. Like, if, if it's, I mean, for, for something, there's, in the high school level, we're going to see it more often, where it's really important. But the middle school and the elementary level, I feel like anybody who's, because you're going to have much lower, especially at the elementary, a much lower vaccine percentage, you know.
I feel like this is part of what we talked about when we talked about Model UN, is our stance that if, if they all can't, then none participate, right? That was part of. So like elementary band playing at Fenway isn't necessarily a resume builder, right?
Right.
It's a great experience for kids.
Normal experience.
You know, so is, is the purview of the committee to say that if, if every kid can't go, then no kid goes?
Or, or maybe.
For an enrichment opportunity, right? It's not, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know. I, I don't know, I just, I feel like we need further discussion about it because I, I am, I, I wouldn't want to send, certainly would want to send a classroom of kids during the school day to anything that would exclude children in any case. Like, so that, so any classroom, like, well, we're going to go to, you know, the Freedom Trail or whatever, you know, like if, if the kids can't, you know, if anyone's going to be excluded and it happens during the school day, I feel like we just don't do it. You know, because you can't just, you can't, if we're a public education, we can't exclude kids. But then there's extra particular ones that we have to look at, you know, like the DECA trip is really important, the All States is really important. Like, I'm sure there's a few others that I don't know about that are really important for.
I think I'd like to see.
So, but I'd like to see them before.
Yeah, I'd like to see the whole laundry list.
See the list before we make a decision.
Yeah, like, I don't want to just blanket, just say like, you know, we'll only send it for specific ones, I'd like to know.
Right, you might want to look at it in policy, right? Because policies that you guys have purview out of, out of state overnight field trips.
Correct.
And so you don't necessarily weigh in on the plantation. Obviously, I'm happy to bring information to you all and, and, you know, come up with a plan on how we're addressing these things, but the way the policy is written right now is.
And I think that's my response to Susan, I think, would be really, what's valuable to some may not be valuable to others, right? So who's to say the five of us would have a lens strong enough to cover what's, what's important to everyone, right? And then the other piece, that's why I would defer to the district, especially in most of these, and obviously our purview is outside of that, so we can weigh in there. But I think as, as a committee, we're trying to put pieces in place that allow that not to happen, right? That none of our students get excluded, so we're sending these letters out to put the pressure on these groups.
Right.
To either answer that or not, to open that up. So then, it then becomes in the district's decision to make sure that's in the best interest of the students.
The Van Gogh exhibit could be just as important to a student as going.
It's all valuable as an educational experience, but then as we start to decide the tiers, I think it becomes challenging, right?
I know.
So we're trying as a committee to, to prompt any destination that we might have a student go to, to have had the foresight, to have had the conversation already, so that we don't commit and get students excited about something only to find out that the goalpost has been moved to.
So let's, let's, let's do this.
Well, that and even stronger than that, it's saying, listen, we don't agree with that if that's the stance you're taking, and can you make it, changes to that so that our students can participate?
And then other altern, other alternatives in some cases.
What alternatives can you provide?
Right, so, because they're, because, anyway, okay, so let's, let's do it this way. Let's take two actions from here. Number one, we have a motion that we haven't voted on, so let's vote on that. And then let's figure out what the list is that are, we sent letters to, we have issues with. And let's also a policy look at this because this, let's put it this way, the vaccine mandate for the city is going to stay in place until either, one, the mayor rescends it, which is highly unlikely, two, it gets overturned in court, which is being challenged at least for the, by the, for the employees, or three, there's a change in administration, in a new administration feels differently. One of those three things has to happen for it to not be there a year, two years from now. I hate to, to say it, but that's the reality. So let's also kick it back to policy because this isn't just going to be Boston. This could turn into a Washington DC trip, this could turn into a New York City trip. Let's figure out what we want the policy to be, because as we know, a year from now, two years from now, five years from now, we're not going to have 100% of our students vaccinated, right? And don't ask who's been vaccinated for measles, mumps, and diptheria, that was it, right? That's one of them?
Measles, mumps.
Rubella, sorry, I don't.
The MMR.
I never took, I didn't take my kids for those, I can't stand needles myself, so.
Listen, you can violate your own hippo rights, but we can't continue to help you violate them for your children.
No, 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 my wife took them, they are vaccinated. But the point I'm trying to make is, is they don't ask that, right? And I know we don't have 100% of our students with that.
Right.
So why are they changing this? So, you know, and again, it's not.
Right, and I just caution you because this is a larger policy discussion, because technically you guys should have no idea if kids are going to the Van Gogh exhibit or not, right?
Absolutely, completely. I just want to make sure, well, we want to make sure that students have equal access. Pardon me, if they don't, we have some type of.
Understood, yep.
So, any, did everybody agree with that approach? Okay, so all those in favor of the motion that the superintendent reach out to these organizations if they're not going to follow the exemption? So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, that's unanimous.
I was just laughing at how Natalie's going to have to type that up.
Get the tape.
It's like 30 minutes of conversation.
It wasn't 30 minutes of conversation.
I believe in you, Natalie.
What does that even mean?
It was not.
On a motion made at seven, you voted on it at 8:45.
It was not, it was not, because I looked at the clock, it was five.
It's still eight, 10.
It was actual.
It was really long, right?
What are you saying?
I'll listen to the tape.
It was not really long. It was no more than 10 minutes.
Okay.
I know it, but, okay. Before we go into.
We have to do minutes.
We have to do minutes and then we have, then I think that's it. Any other comments or questions?
I'm supporting not only myself, but my fellow peers in wearing of masks. There has been lots of confusion and fear that this school has brought upon us. Why must we wear masks during school when we can sit at a lunch table elbow to elbow? This is a question I've brought up to my teachers who cannot give me a valid answer. They just tell me, I am not the one in charge, or I do not make the, the decisions. I've been told that if I do not pull up my mask, they will take away my right to learn in a classroom. Just last week, I was sent down to the office in which I spoke with Mrs. Kelly for the entire class period about why I did not want to wear the mask. At the beginning of the pandemic, I wore my mask because there was so much unknown, but now it is affecting me. When watching the school board meeting from last week in search of some answers, I found out that DESI is funding the school $14 million, and without them, we would not have a school. So that is why the masks are being enforced so harshly upon the students. I firmly believe that $14 million is not worth taking the mental health away from me or my peers. Many of my peers are scared to speak up and, and are angry with the school's decision to follow DESI's unjust rules that cannot be backed up by the staff themselves. Many of my peers, as well of myself, are suffering mentally. Additionally, the suicide rates have been higher than they have ever been. If you don't believe me, I tried to seek help from a therapist. He stated that he could not help me because there are more serious problems with mental illness right now, and he specifically, specifically stated suicides. After watching last week's meeting, I am aware that DESI is not responding to your letters due to pending litigations. If our voices aren't being heard and addressed, then we should not have to be forced to wear masks that we fear are a detriment to our health. I also heard you say in the last meeting, um, that detentions were not given out. I personally know of one given by Mrs. Bradford. I know some of my peers would rather wear the mask, but a drastic number of them do not want to wear the mask and are afraid of speaking up, so they hold this all inside, and I do not think that is the answer. On top of it, when teachers aggressively raise their voice to students telling them to wear the mask properly, it adds to our anxiety and fear. For example, when I was on a mask break just last week, a teacher I did not recognize yelled two, two times saying, "Make sure you are all wearing your mask properly." And specifically staring at me said, "Did you hear me?" For not wearing my mask properly inside due to the fact that I decided to stay in rather than go out in the negative four degree weather. Me and my peers have suffered from not being able to experience our freedom of expression for the past two years and being scared to speak up for our own rights, enough is enough. With all due respect, I am done complying with the mask mandate in school because I know my mental health is more important than DESI's 80% compliance rule. That is not, that has not even been proven to be effective, and there is no science to support it. We may all look okay to you on the outside, but on the inside, we are suffering. Thank you for your time, and I ask for your understanding.
Thank you so much.
So I will say, the $14 million, if we didn't have, we would probably have stopped school a month ago. So I understand it may sound as simple as just not complying. If they withheld our funding, nothing, nothing good could come out of it. So, yeah, they do have that, they hold that hammer above us, but if we don't have that money, that is, state provides about 48%, 47% of our funding, so we'd be able to get to about a half of the school year without it. And then we would be, in worst case, because we would be have kids out of school and they would be taking legal action, and it would cost the town even more money. So I understand, I can appreciate the concern, but without that money, we don't have a school district. It's, we understand, and we, I think it was in November, December, you, was it November, December? You presented the, the social emotional update, and we know there's, um, we know there's been an increase in suicide attempts. There's been about a 25% increase in inpatient admissions over the past year.
Mark, I think highlighted some of that.
Yeah, so we did, and so, so what we're doing is we're trying to work on the things we can control and things we can address. And those are what we can do around social emotional supports for, for kids. And what we can do around anything else around mask breaks, applying for the waiver at 80%. Those are the things we can do. We have tried and we've asked DESI. I went to Representative Cutler's office end of last week. They got back to me today, and they went to DESI, and DESI told them that, basically, I'm going to paraphrase because I don't have it in front of me. They're relying on public health data and they're relying on the public health officials to tell them they're not looking at specific metrics. So until they change things, then we have to, we do have to abide by it. Because there's just, we know, we've exhausted every option, we've gotten all the legal opinions, there's nothing we can do. All we, what we can do though is try to work on support for students like yourself, um, you know, through the schools and through, Jess, I don't want to.
Sure, certainly our social workers are available. We did add some resources this year at our middle school. We added another .5 social worker, um, based on obviously the impact that the pandemic has had and increased numbers and, and student needs. So I certainly would encourage not only you, but any, you know, peers to reach out to Mrs. Garrity and Mrs. McGowan's sub who's in for the social worker, but also guidance if there's a need or a question or a concern or just an unsettled feeling during the school day. Certainly, we're here to support. We, we hear you and we appreciate you coming tonight to share your concerns. I think the committee has recognized the impact.
I think he, he has reached, I mean, he went to Mrs. Kelly and he did speak with her, and unfortunately, he missed a whole class period. So I applaud him for speaking up, and he is going to people, whether it be other teachers or whatnot, that he feels comfortable with. I don't think necessarily going to Mrs. Garrity or whatever, it's not always the answer. I applaud him, he, he's struggling. It's tough as a mom to stand up here and listen to that. But if he's done with the mask, I, I'm telling you, he's done with the mask. So, I, I mean, I know you guys, your hands are tied because of the, the money, but my kid's mental health comes above anything else. I don't, you can't put a price tag on it.
So, and obviously, it's not just about the money. There's other avenues that they can take personally against people within the district if we decide. And those ones are long lasting. They're not a one time, hey, we're going to withhold a million dollars there. Oh, by the way, you're not going to be able to work in your profession again because we're pulling your license or.
They're doing that with the doctors too, you know, I'm, I'm on the same way. I'm at the point where, and I respect you all, but I'm at the same, I'm, I'm a mama bear. And if somebody says that my son can't wear a mask and tis God given right to do what he chooses, then he's not wearing a mask, bottom line. I mean, I, I understand where you guys are coming from, but at the same time, you have to understand, and if that's not a cry for help, I don't know what is. And, and the fact that you can't respect that, you know.
I don't think, I don't think it's not we respect.
I shouldn't use the word respect, I apologize, because I do appreciate, and I have a letter here that I was going to read too, but.
It's fine, no, no, it's fine, I understand. Just to, one other thing, because I think it's important, I don't want to, sorry, because I don't want to forget it. We're not looking at this, by the way, um, as, so masks come off at some date this year. So say that we hit the waiver next week and all of a sudden, boom, they're gone. We're not saying that that's going to end all the problems, right? We looked at this, and this is what we talked about, and I think it was December. And while we'll be talking, I look down, it's March 8th is the next update scheduled on social, in the social emotional area. We're looking at this as being a multi-year effort to get back to where these kids should be socially, emotionally, as well as educationally, right? You saw some, if you were here, but if not, then, you know, obviously the meeting's out there and the materials are out there. This is, this is a, a multi-year recovery effort to.
Absolutely.
Right, so it's not as though we're looking at it and no more masks is not going, yeah, it's going to address some issues, but it's not going to address them all.
It's not going to be a switch that flips.
Correct.
Absolutely, but if, any little bit that I can do to help my son or that he can do to help himself, we're, we're all on board, we're going to do it. But the other thing is, is you're saying that 80%, and then you're going to ask DESI if they're going to, you know, request the waiver from them? Like, how are they going to apply to, like reply to that when they haven't been replying to your letters?
It's a different section of D E S E, so there's a compliance unit.
Isn't that convenient?
Once we send, you know, it's, it's not, you're not emailing Jeff Riley asking for a waiver for a mask.
That's convenient, and not, I don't mean it fresh towards you, I mean it towards.
No, I did again, reach out just to find out what the timeline is, because with things in the state, usually it takes a long time to get an answer. But it is a 24 to 48 hour term.
Again, it's people, you know, it, it's what's convenient to them and to the, and it's not okay, but anyway.
Let's put it this way, if, if they don't respond on the timeline they have, then, you know, I, no issue reaching back out. Representative Cutler, his, his office turned around things really quickly.
Right, and they haven't refused any 80% waiver.
So that's fine. Don't get me wrong, I just, so I know all of us are dealing with this in different levels. I mean, if you've watched the news, my daughter's college has been on the news four times, five times this school year. They've had six suicides.
Yep.
Seven unexpected deaths, one was by a seizure. It's all public information, not talking about anything else. They now have mental health training for parents on what to recognize they're doing things. They immediately pulled back every COVID guideline they could as of last week. They're still in masks in buildings because that's a Worcester City mandate. But it's, it's real when you get the, the call or the comment of, hey dad, did you see another kid? And you're like, okay, so we know, or I, I think I said this last time, the number of parents, I know myself, and I probably, I don't want to speak for the others, but I'm sure they have the same thing, have reached out saying, hey, my, my child is having these issues. What can the schools do, or what can you do, or can you help me or guide me? And we've had, I've had discussions with several people here on some of these kids, because they're really, they're suffering. So it's not as though we, I, hopefully it doesn't come across that we don't know that there's an issue and we're taking it lightly because we're not.
We're living it with you.
Yeah.
Well, and, and I just want to say, I appreciate you coming forward. And I've heard things in our district where we've worked with students, and I hope that you bring this to our attention. We'll get the people in the district to be able to support you that way, and that's my encouragement that that continues to happen.
And I encourage you to our state representatives, they need to hear from well spoken young people like you who are living the consequences of the choices that are coming. It will help them in their roles and doing their job. It's not a, it's not a go attack them, it's, it's to help them even have more information.
I'm sorry, what was it, Vinny? Vinny? I don't think I could have done what you did at your age, so to, should be applauded for that, so good job. I definitely would not have come forward, um, you know, not that we're scary adults, but, because we're not, I promise. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't have been able to do that. So I, I applaud you for coming forward, and I want you to know, we are doing what we can. I may not have seen it, but we are doing everything we can in at least controlling the things that we can control in this tough situation that we've been living for now. Couple weeks, we're a couple weeks short of two years, so since we started talking about the impact here, so I'm sorry.
And please know that we're equally frustrated with the fact that you can't take your masks off.
I've conveyed that with him, and that's one of the reasons why he watched the meeting last week.
Yeah, we are very frustrated. It's been, we've talked about it multiple times, if it was up to us, there wouldn't be any masks. We voted no masks at the beginning of the school year before D E S E took over. So we completely, you know, agree with you, and I'm sorry for everything you're going through. You are very well spoken, and I'm, I'm just like really proud that you were able to get up and talk about it. Because I think it really means a lot when you do that, because there's a lot of students who don't have the guts to do that. And I'm, I really think it's great that you did, and you said it very well, and I appreciate it.
Sorry, go ahead.
So I just, I, first off, I want to thank the board members for all you've done to fight for our children, even though your voices have fallen on DESI's deaf ears. I also appreciate you putting the tables back in the lunchroom. This was, there was quite a buzz, which was great, but sad at the same time that this was a highlight of their day. I understand masks continue to be mandated because Pembroke would be out the $14 million from DESI Chapter 70 funding. My response to that is that you cannot put a dollar amount on protecting our children, and their mental health is not up for trafficking. I know you, you've written to DESI on more than one occasion stating that local governments are in the best position to assess and respond to the impacts of COVID and should be the ones to make decisions. You also asked for explanation and clarity around their decision making. I especially like that, that you asked for the science used to implement their current masking requirements. As we learned in the last meeting, DESI is not responding due to pending litigations. I find it absurd that DESI mandates our children to do something which is having a tremendous impact on them, and yet ironic that, that now they have been silenced due to the pending litigations. We should not be complying one more day if they're not able to respond to us regarding their unlawful mandates. I would suggest that like-minded South Shore's superintendents and school board teams team up and apply for an emergency injunction overruling the mandates on the masks while their litigation plays out in court. If not, we simply should not comply if they can't respond. I don't care what anyone says, there's no price tag you can put on my child's head. There was just an article published by Dr. Shira Durand, infectious disease specialist at Tufts Medical Center, urging public health leaders and school officials to make masks optional for students in states where they, they are currently mandated in schools. She went on to state that although she's not a mental health expert as, as a mother and a friend, she's been seeing the damaging effects from the constant mask queering. I would echo her comments and state that a lot of us parents have seen the damaging effects, including you guys. There is also, um, another, excuse me, there is also another article I read stating 47, um, studies confirm ineffectiveness of masks for COVID, and 32 more confirm their negative health effects. The fact that my son, son spoke up about his own personal struggle, struggles and how he couldn't get an appointment with a therapist should speak volumes to you all. As the school board, you may say your hands are tied, but as a mom, I say mine are not. This is not, and this is an emergent situation and severe. I give thanks to God for Pembroke's wonderful music program that is, that's gotten him through to this point, but it's not enough. To see my junior hate school is really tough because I really enjoyed those years. I feel that when it comes down to my own health as well as the health of my children, that I'm responsible and need to do what I firmly believe is best and of my conscience. Not all medical providers are in the same arena as DESI, and DESI is not God. We as parents need to choose what is best for our families. DESI believes, DESI's beliefs should not trump mine, and their mandates are not laws and are extremely unjust, especially at this point in this pandemic. I've done my own research and I've seen the dead. I am perfectly capable, capable of deciding what is best for our children. That being said, I stand by my son, and he'll no longer be wearing a mask. He stood up respectfully and I support him. A lot of the unknown has been, has been answered. COVID, like the flu, is here to stay. People should be able to choose whether they want to wear a mask or not. His education should not be interrupted for exercising his First Amendment rights and not giving into this tyrannical and coercive behavior. DESI does not parent my child, and they certainly do not know what is best for him as they don't see him suffer like I do. As I've stated before, sorry, this is not about whether you are vaccinated or masked, and it's also not about the numbers. If you want to wear a mask or be vaccinated, that's your God given right and your choice. If the numbers mattered, then the DEI committee would have never been formed because the people spoke there and we were ignored. This is about the coercion placed upon our children in schools, taking away our freedoms and rights. We pay taxes, and my son deserves an education and, and to do so unmasked. I do not consent to these tyrannical mandates, and our children should not be played with or rather bullied. As I said last week, we need more time, we need to come together for our children and teach them to become strong and fearless leaders while respecting everyone's beliefs and rights to choose. With all due respect, if the school is going to be tied to the coercion for the money, then I ask, then I as a parent choose to be tied to my child's mental health and right to a free and appropriate public education. I choose to listen to my child's cry for help. Thank you, Vincent, for being so brave tonight. I know that wasn't easy, and it's not easy for me either. And again, it's not against you guys, I, this is my place to, to give a voice. I know it's DESI, um, I, like I said, I'm very appreciative for all you do, but we've had, we're checking out, we've had enough. Thank you.
Once again, Pam, you nailed it. Thank you. And Vinny, I hear you, and a lot of other people hear you. And I thank you for having the courage to share what you're going through in the heart. And I hope that it brings some healing to you to be able to have done that. And, and we're going to keep fighting for you and for all the other kids, and we hear you, okay? And all the other kids that are out there, if you feel the need to stand here the next meeting and express how you feel and what you're going through, please, please, these people are not going to bite you. Stand here and express how you feel and share your feelings, because your voice needs to be heard, because we're going to keep fighting, and we're going to keep saying that this is wrong. It's wrong, it's wrong, it's wrong. And God help us, if some child has been asking us for help and we're ignoring them because of $14 million, God help us. There was discussion about budget money tonight, about interior cameras being installed to make our schools safe. I ask, what is the mental impact on a child that you've already got this far? Now you're going to have them watch 24/7 while they're in, they're at safe school? I have real concerns about that and where that path is going to take us. We're going to, are we going to, what are we doing to our schools? We're going to have everyone constantly on video? And who's going to monitor, the gentleman that was sitting there presenting it? And does he need money now for another, a full-time employee to watch the camera room, to watch our children? What's that going to do with their mental health? Just a thought. Another thing that was discussed that I'm concerned about is, I feel as though our lease up with Chromebook Google is maybe a wonderful opportunity to get some request proposals from other vendors to provide us devices. Google seems to have a really tactical involvement in everything in our society, and it's kind of scary. And all of our educational, our library is actually being taken over and digitalized. I, I can't wait till the real estate is completely like maybe 50% hard books. In, in our books, is it an agenda in our, to eliminate hard copy books in the long-term plans for the school committee? Is this going to become just a digital lab at some point? Is that a plan? That, that was also a concern. I value books. I think there's something about, and as teachers, about seeing the word on paper and tangibility of, of the written word. And I, I'm, I'm concerned that that's kind of becoming old school, if you will. And, and I'm concerned that that gift of a book is going to be lost with digital world that we are running into. So is there any other vendors besides Google that is in the market of providing educational devices? Could we possibly look into, I'm Googling our district?
So the devices don't actually come from Google. The devices come through a series of vendors on the state contract for that type of device.
The OS, I guess.
Right, we're also able to purchase Apple products. But again, it's, it's about what is the, what is the need and use for the device in the district versus the price point? Again, you know, I have a MacBook at home, a lot of, a lot of kids have MacBook computers when they go to college. That's a much different price point than, than a Chromebook, but it's not Google per se that we purchase from. That's not, that's not at all.
I think there are HPs where some of them.
Some of them are HP Chromebooks, some of them are Lenovo, there's a whole bunch of different, different brands.
But they're all, they're all on the Google platform.
They are on a Google, right, so Pembroke as a district used to be Internet Explorer, Explorer and Office 365, but the shift was made to Google for education, so.
And is the CARES money required that we use Google OS?
No, it's not device dependent.
Okay, um, thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? So just real, last quick, um, before we go into executive sessions, a motion to approve the minutes. So just real, last quick, um, before we go into executive sessions, a motion to approve the minutes for January 25th, 2022. Motion by Sue, submitted by Lance. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, that's unanimous. Thank you. Okay. So with that, at 9:20, take a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Chapter 38, Section 21A3 to discuss strategy of collective bargaining as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the legal position of the school committee as declared by the chair. Motion by Lance, seconded by Suzie, by roll call, Sue.
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Lance?
Yes.
And I am, yes. Thanks, everybody, for coming, and thanks, everybody, for watching. I will see you in a few weeks.
Thank you. Thanks, guys.